Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting for Tuesday, February the 18th. Ms. Hilbert, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dela Garza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler. Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Protim Young.
Here.
Councilman Lofgren.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker.
Here. If you would, please rise and join me for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the sixteenth flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Again, welcome, everyone. We will jump straight into our agenda for the evening, and we'll start with announcements and reminders. Mr. Garza, do you have some things for us this evening?
I have several, actually.
I suspected as much.
That's why it's a light agenda, because it's a lot of announcements. On behalf of municipal court, we want to remind the public that they are hosting additional court dockets during the month of February for people to resolve their past due citations and active warrants as part of warrant resolution month. Please visit victorietx.gov/courtpay to search for active warrants or past due citations as community service or reduced fines may be available. For more information, contact municipal court at 361-485-3050. On behalf of the communications department, our latest episode of the city's podcast, Town Talk, featuring our very own Mayor Dwayne Crocker, has been released. In this episode, the mayor covers 2024 highlights and achievements, the city's vision for 2025, and updated us on some important topics to our residents, including growing Victoria Initiative, street improvements, and the community center project. This episode and more can be found on Spotify, or YouTube, or by visiting victorietx.gov/towntalk. On behalf of the library, we want to invite residents to join us for the grand opening of the newest anytime pickup locker at the Victoria Mall on Tuesday, February 25th, at 10:00 a.m. by the food court entrance. The new pickup locker will provide another convenient option for residents to pick up their reserved library materials 24/7. On behalf of the parks department, we want to remind the public that registration for spring adult softball and adult kickball leagues ends Friday, February 28th, and the season begins Monday, March 10th. For more information, contact the Parks and Recreation Department at 361-485-3200, or victorietx.gov/parks. And finally, on behalf of Development Services, the Planning and Development Services Department will hold an informational meeting on Wednesday, March 5th, at 2:00 p.m. in the 700 Main Center, conference room 205, for any organization interested in applying for 2025 Community Development Blog Grant funding. This meeting is mandatory for nonprofit organizations wanting to apply for this federal funding allocation to help load of moderate income households in Victoria.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garza. So then we will jump into public and employee recognition. So we have one proclamation this evening. Ms. Hilbert, will you help me out with that?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Rotary Clubs of Victoria Rotary, Rotary Club of Victoria Northside, and Victoria Downtown Rotary Club have provided over 100 years of service demonstrating the magic rotary in serving their local communities and the world, and whereas Rotary International is a worldwide service organization founded on February 23rd, 1905, with the membership of 1.4 million professionals and business leaders in 200 countries organized into 46,000 clubs grouped into 527 districts and 34 zones, and whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encouraging high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world, and whereas Rotary International's vision statement is "Together we see a world where people unite and take action to create lasting change across the globe, in our communities, and in ourselves," and whereas the Rotary Foundation is a public charity that transforms donations into life-changing, sustainable projects that address promoting peace, fighting disease, providing clean water, sanitation and hygiene, saving mothers and children, supporting education, and growing local economies, and protecting the environment, and whereas Rotary District 5930 and its 50 clubs are investing in a local community-based service projects for this year funded through the Rotary Foundation, and whereas Rotary District 5930 and all of its clubs are committed to promoting peace in the community, our schools, and within our families, now therefore I, Dwayne Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim February 23rd, 2025, as Rotary International Day in Victoria, Texas, and call upon its citizens to recognize and celebrate the 120th anniversary of the founding of Rotary International, and congratulate our Rotarians for their commitment to service for our community.
Great job, Avril.
Thank you again. Appreciate the whole community. As mentioned, Rotary, our motto is "Service Above Self." We really, on behalf of all the Victoria Rotary Clubs, you know, we're just thankful for the community's support in helping us continue to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all y'all do in the community. Okay. Mr. Garza, any other public and employee recognitions?
I do have... Come on, A.J. I do have a couple. I'm not sure if you always hear from the library, but if you are, please, please rise. The Victoria Public Library has received the 2024 Achievement of Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, an affiliate of the Texas Municipal League. To successfully receive the Achievement of Library Excellence Award, the library must exhibit excellence by providing services to underserved and special populations, marketing in innovative ways, pursuing collaborative efforts, offering enhanced services through unique or expanded programming, providing literacy support, providing for digital inclusion, supporting workforce development, promoting cultural, topical, and educational programming, comprehensively training staff, and offering other unique services to their community. Of the 542 public libraries in Texas, only 102 received this award in 2024. And so congratulations to Jessica and her entire team for this very well-deserved recognition. I'd like to ask Austin Anderson to please rise. He is our Distribution and Collections Manager for Public Works. He just passed his exam to become a Class A Water Operator with the City of Victoria. A Class A Water License refers to the highest level of certification for a water system operator, typically signifying a high level of expertise and experience required to manage complex public water systems. This license requires several years of hands-on experience in water treatment operations in Texas. This is a big accomplishment for him and for the city, and we thank him for his hard work and dedication to professional development. So, Austin, congratulations. That's it?
That's it. Okay. We'll move on then to items from council. Does anybody have anything? Okay. I have a couple real quick. I did just receive information about warming centers this week that I wanted to share. With the cold weather expected to come in, there will be two centers open Wednesday night and Thursday night from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. One is at the First United Methodist Church, 407 North Bridge. All are welcome there. And then the other one, same dates and times at the Salvation Army, 1302 North Lewis Street, and that is adult males only overnight. So, just wanted to get that information out there. The other item I have was I was attended the ribbon cutting for the Toasted Joe, which is a new restaurant here in town, on Saturday, and I want to give a shout out to our Development Services Team, Economic Development, to Mr. Garza and his staff. I spoke with the owner, and in his comments, both to me and in his public comments, he talked about how great it was to work with the City of Victoria, how awesome the experience was, and actually said that he has worked with a number of other cities and that there's no way that they could have done what they did and the timeframe that they did it to get their restaurant open anywhere else other than Victoria. So, congratulations to y'all. Job well done. Thank you. So, just wanted to give y'all kudos on that. So, that was a... And I told that gentleman, please feel free to share that information with everybody who will listen to you. All right. Well, then with that, we will move into citizens' communication. I have three cards, I believe, and we'll start with Michael Vondra. Good evening, Mr. Vondra.
Good evening. I'm Michael Vondra. I live at 2107 North Benjourin. There looks like there's some sewer leaks at the trailer park where I used to live. A tenant just brought it up to me, and it's brown, nasty-looking water, and it's stagnant. And this's been going on for a long time, and it needs to be taken care of. The person that lived in that tent house said they were paying $800 a month water bills, and, you know, that's too much. And they're fixing to get it prepared so they can re-rent it, because they evicted the last person. But I do hope that they do fix the water leaks and the sewer leaks, and the legal department can get with the trailer park owner to fix it, because on his profile, it said he had $80 million in investments. And I know it's hard when you only have $80 million in investments, and you don't have any left over to fix the sewer leaks and water leaks, but I would like it taken care of. A one tenant did bring that to my attention, and he don't want to talk about it, because he don't want to get evicted, but it is raining right now, so, you know, they could use the excuse, well, that's just rainwater. But before it was raining, it was really bad, and he did point it to me. It was between 2202 North Benjourin and 2204, between the gray house and that tent house that they're renting, and I really do hope they don't have to pay $800 a month water bill. A typical water bill in a trailer house there is about $60 a month. And a happy belated Valentine's Day to all the women. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vondra. The next card I have is Mr. Harley Fisk. Welcome back, Mr. Fisk. Always good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff, and interested citizens. You know, I'm not shy about sharing things that I find that I think might help the City of Victoria. The other night, I decided to get caught up on some back TV episodes. I was watching Sunday morning when a segment caught my attention and triggered the thought that it might be something to consider here in Victoria. A program was started in Zimbabwe to bridge the mental health treatment gap. It's called the Friendship Bench Program. Benches are placed around the city in safe places, and trained older volunteers meet with visitors who maybe experienced episodes of depression or anxiety. The volunteers use a form of problem-solving therapy or cognitive behavioral therapy at a primary care level. This is often referred to as talk therapy. It is suggested that volunteers be older adults who have lots of life experience behind them. Training is provided for the volunteers, and mechanisms are set up so that more serious issues are referred to professional therapists. The goal is to reduce the number of individuals who are on waiting lists for care and to allow professionals to focus on those who need more assistance. Sessions usually last about 45 minutes and are scheduled in advance. Program costs would be relatively low, consisting mainly of the cost of training volunteers, the purchase of the benches themselves, and some administrative costs associated with record-keeping. There's no cost for those using the service, which allows individuals who might be priced out of conventional care to receive treatment. This program has been successfully used in Zimbabwe for over 20 years with documented success. It's now being used in some U.S. cities such as Washington and New York. I encourage the council and city manager to consider developing a program such as this to add to the ongoing efforts to improve mental health in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. And then finally, Ms. Ingraham Sparkman.
Good evening. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Welcome. Just wanted to say good evening to you, Mayor Crocker, and of course, to city council members and to the community here, and those who are listening today. I am Ingraham Sparkman. I am the new Development Director for Golden Crescent Habitat for Humanity. First and foremost, thank you for your time today, and more importantly, for your dedicated service to our community. Your leadership and commitment to making our city a better place does not go unnoticed, and I'm grateful for all that you do. I am here on behalf of Golden Crescent Habitat for Humanity, an organization that has been working tirelessly to ensure that hard-working families in our community have access to safe, decent, and affordable housing now for 31 years. For 31 years, we've built homes, strengthened communities, and empowered families to break the cycle of worrying if they're going to make ends meet, to instead knowing that they have enough. We've done that right here in the Crossroads community, but the only way that we can do this is with your participation in our programs and your belief in all that we do. Right now, we have a very hard-working family who's lost their home to an electrical fire. As we're looking into 25, and as we're looking ahead, of course, in 2025, I'm going to embark on a very ambitious initiative. It's called 25 in 2025. Our goal is to rally 2,500 community members to pledge just $25 a month for 12 months. This grassroots movement is going to provide sustainable funding to build more homes and change more lives right here in our community and the surrounding counties. We know that with the support of leadership like you, we can make this vision a reality, and I'm here to invite you to join us by becoming a sponsor and by attending our largest effort to make 25 in 25 a success. On February the 25th, we are hosting a telethon, an old-school telethon at Habitat located at 4103 North Navarro Suite 200, and I invite you all to come, either grab some of the numbers that we have on our list, or maybe reach out to some family and friends. And so that was it. That's all I have. But I do have invitations. Are you allowed to approach the benches?
Sure.
Or he'll take them. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, guys. So, please mark your calendars. I would appreciate seeing you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sparkman, and thanks to Habitat for all you guys do in the community.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right. With that, then, we will move down the agenda. We have no items for public hearings, and so we have a few items on consent agenda. Ms. Hilbert, if you would assist with the consent agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Item D1 is the adoption amendments to the regular meeting held on February 4th, 2025. Item D2 is an approval, is a resolution approving, entered local agreement of Victoria County for plan review and inspection services for the Victoria County Mental Health Facility Project. Item D3 is a resolution approving investment policy and list of qualified brokers, and item D4 is approval of a contract with Third Coast Services LLC for the replacement of the traffic signal pole mast arm in the amount of $65,053.34.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbert. Do I have any motions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda as read.
A second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Moving on, then, we have no action items, and so we will jump straight into our city manager reports. Mr. Garza.
Good afternoon. We will continue our presentation of annual reports, and tonight, we have three. And to kick it off, I'm going to ask Tiffany to come up and provide her update on municipal court.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm excited tonight to be representing the municipal court and giving you our fiscal year 2024 annual report. So, this is our team here. We have five staff members and our municipal court judge, who is at training this week and unfortunately unable to join us, but we're blessed to have her as our leader for our court to help ensure access to justice. Our mission of the municipal court is to strive to provide increased access to fair court proceedings and accurate information that follows all applicable laws and ensures the rights of all are protected. Our goals are to ensure access to justice, go out into the community through our community outreach efforts. That's Judge Heinold there in the middle with one of her mock trial exercises that she goes into the classrooms to teach. And then staff development. Tara Tenney there is featured in the photo. Last year during fiscal year '24, she did obtain her Level 1 Clerk Certification, as well as graduated with her Bachelor's in Criminal Justice Administration. So, we do have a clerk certification program that we highly encourage our staff to attend and go through that is part of our annual development. One program that our judge is very passionate about that we started about two years ago now is the Court to Recovery Partnership with Billy T. Catan. And this particular partnership is related with offenses involving public intoxication or other substance matters, such as possession of drug paraphernalia. So, in fiscal year 2024, we had a total of 25 people that did comply with all terms of the program. Number 36 attended the program, and which was a total of 144 hours of class time. So, monthly, Billy T. Catan offers two classes a month. It is a two-part program. They do have to attend both classes to graduate. They are given a period of time to do that, to help provide them information and resources related to their particular offenses. And so that is a continued partnership that we are looking at growing as we move forward. We also like to do all kinds of community outreach initiatives. We had two Java with the judge events that I know several of you attended. We had our 125th that we celebrated back in September, and then during municipal court week, we also typically will host one of those at that. We also had an intern that we had helped develop a self-help resource that we did in partnership with the library, and that's been a great resource that we can give to the community members to show them what legal resources are available in the community. We have the car seat program and child passenger safety grant that we oversee, and then we did hold one or two mock trials in the past year, and that is also career fairs as well. So, this is an overview of some of those numbers in terms of what types of things we did. With car seat inspections, we had a total of 70 car seat inspections through a couple of events and onsite inspections throughout the year. A total of 40 outreach effort initiatives between car seat programs, traffic safety booths, Java with the judge. I'm not sure why that says five. I don't think we had five last year. I think that was supposed to be two there. And then Career Day Partnerships was five. And so we did go on campus to a couple of different events, and we also hosted one here as well. We did also have five staff members between various departments. So, municipal court and the police department have car seat technicians, and so five new staff members for the City of Victoria became technicians in the past year as well. And this is an overview of the child safety program itself. So, in October is typically when the grant will go into effect. In April is where we hosted a car seat event, a community-wide car seat event at Target. We also did a couple of booths throughout that month as well. In June and July, we did a couple of back-to-school events and educated on car seat safety in the summer. And then in September, we hosted that class here in Victoria in collaboration with Texas A&amp;M Agrolife, and that's where we also had a car seat event at Target. And in the picture here, there's a few of the five staff members are featured in there, and that was at our, when they graduated, they were very excited to be completed with that program. We have a juvenile case manager program where one of our staff members spends a small percentage of her time with focusing on our more youthful offenses. Those that are 10 to 16 years of age are the ones that are in this particular type of program. We have partnerships with Midcoast Family Services, Victoria College, and University of Houston, and then Victoria Police Department has hosted some classes for us, and our partnership with Keep Victoria Beautiful to offer volunteer opportunities for them. So, we tend to go out to those to help provide supervision for those that are needing community service hours. And so throughout the year, we had 11 different events that were either with one of these partners here. A total of 23 attended these events. 35 hours of education were provided. Midcoast Family Services does offer various types of preventative classes that they provide, such as substance, mental health, and anger management, emotion management, and things of that sort. And so they did provide hours of community service and education for them on Saturdays, and a total of 192 hours of community service were performed by the youth throughout the year. We also host monthly warrant resolution dockets. While this month, we are having extra dockets, we do this all throughout the year, we do this throughout the community, as well as offering virtual options. And so these are some of the places that we've visited throughout the year. We have went to Salvation Army, Midcoast Family Services has a community space, the library has been a great partner as well. And so through that, we spent 570 hours working on these dockets. 592 people attended, and these are typically when somebody fell behind on an arrangement of sort, maybe failed to appear for court, or they have an active warrant. And so this is an opportunity for them to get back on track. Maybe they were incarcerated, the judge can provide, you know, they offer the credit for time served for that, or community service and options such as that. And through those dockets, we were able to clear and process over 1,400 cases. And these are our stats for the year. If they're in red, that means we were slightly down from the previous year. If in black, they were either flat or above. So, we did see an uptick in cases filed throughout the year of almost 20% of that. Our dockets went down slightly, but last year, the number was 125. So, we missed about six dockets that we didn't have this past year. The code enforcement abatement warrants, that is something that we're able, that our judge is able to do because we became a municipal court of record back in 2021, is when we had an ordinance passed for that. And so those abatement warrants were up from the prior year. And then these are just an overview of the various types of cases that we get. So, we get citations, investigation cases, and site arrests from the police department. We did see an uptick in all of these across the board. We also received citations from the Fire Marshal's Office and code enforcement violations. That number does not include the abatement warrants. And then we do also receive violations from the Animal Services, which is a county entity. So, looking forward, the challenges that we have are related to staffing and efficient uses of technology, and our opportunities are a grant opportunity and case flow management. So, with our staffing, the complexities that we experience in finding collections is due to the lack of dedicated staff focused on case compliance. And so we have a very limited, small staff, so we're not able to focus on closing those cases efficiently and effectively, which is why we make an extra effort throughout the year. which is why we make an extra effort throughout the year to provide opportunities for folks to come in. And with that comes legislative mandates. And so the legislation continues to add additional duties and responsibilities that require the judge to assess each individual case to determine their ability to pay. And our staff, then, we're limited on what we're able to do with that. And so with that, we have experienced quite a significant uptick in duties and responsibilities, but no additional staffing that goes along with that. Additionally, the efficient usage of technology that we're looking at is, right now, our server that our court software is on is 17 years old, and it is needing to be replaced, or we need to look to move that to a hosted environment that would then alleviate that burden from our internal IT staff. And so that's something that we're looking to do because the way our system is now, it limits us in our ability to access our court software when we're remote or off-site, or even locally. And so we're looking to get that replaced in this next fiscal year potentially, and moving away from our local server to a more hosted environment to allow more access to that particular system. The grant opportunity, so we recently applied for a youth diversion, or youth juvenile prevention grant. We're hoping to receive funding for this grant to help us maximize our capacity and reduce recidivism, specifically as it relates to the juvenile cases that are those aged 10 to 16 years of age. So this past year, in January, we were required to have a youth diversion plan in place that was done in the prior legislation session. And so that has created a challenge for us. And so we're looking to have this grant help us to dedicate more of those resources to those youthful folks to help reduce recidivism. And that will help us to more effectively ensure a workload distribution is managed. With the new facility coming, we are hoping to improve our case flow management. We will have more space and more efficiencies in place to ensure an effective administration of court processes within that new facility. And so we're looking to help address backlog of cases by implementing specialized dockets through additional community partnerships. Some of those specialized dockets include a veterans docket, so our judge is wanting to look to explore that, to bring in additional resources to folks that may have financial burdens related to their citations, and bring in some of the community partners for that. And then we're also looking to host campus dockets on school campuses, so that we're meeting the children where they're at for those types of cases versus having to get them out of school to come into the court environment. And so those are some of the things we're looking at to increase our efficiencies and help to manage our overall court backlog. And so I am, with that, I will leave it open for any questions or comments you might have.
I have a question about the Billy T. Catan program.
Sure.
How is that funded?
It is actually, so they, the participants, when they're ordered to that, they are required to pay a fee to Billy T. Catan. It's not something that we're paying for. The judge can, if they are unable to afford that amount, the amount that's assessed by them is $140, then the judge can recommend that they waive it. And my understanding is Billy T. Catan has a grant that they receive funding for that can waive those fees associated.
Any other questions? It was obviously a very busy year.
It was. Still trying to catch up.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. And so we'll move right along, and Julie will come up and present her Development Services Department annual update.
Good evening. So I apologize, I'm a little rusty on these. I don't usually have to do them every year, so.
Excuses.
So I always like, I always like to start with our mission statement. It's long, and our core values are long, but the highlight of it is that we strive to apply codes fairly and consistently in the provision of our, all of our services, and that we have a duty to enforce codes, but we try to balance that duty with a common sense approach and facilitative attitude. And if we continue to get compliments like we did from toasted yogurt, I think it shows we're doing a good job in living up to our mission statement. So we have 26 full-time employees. Two of those are grant-funded, full-time grant-funded, and then we have two partially grant-funded positions. So out of the general fund, it equals 23 full-time positions out of the general fund, with three coming out of the grants, which is our, of course, our NPO and CDBG grant. So our smallest division is our geographic information systems, which of course is just a huge computer system with a lot of data. I don't know if y'all have had time to ever really kind of play around with our maps, but if you ever get on there, you can just, the data can be overwhelming, and it's also really cool. You can find out a lot of information. So, but it keeps our GIS team busy. They work with almost all the departments across the city in making sure that all the data that's going into our system is factual. That they're a very persnickety team, which is a very good thing whenever we're going to look in our GIS system. So one project that has taken an enormous amount of time that they've been helping is with Public Works on development of impervious coverage later to help with future drainage policies. And so figuring out how much impervious coverage is in our community is all being done by the GIS team. There's a lot of backend work with servers and SQLs and making sure all the different parts talk to each other, and it's kind of over my head. I'm sure everyone in IT and GIS department understands it. But every time Adrian comes to me with server updates, usually there's a little nice dollar tag attached to it. It's just whatever you need, Adrian. And then most recently, they collaborated with the police department on the child safety zones map. So the biggest thing about when departments come to GIS is making sure, again, that data is correct. So when GIS first received that map request, there was a thousand-foot buffer and kind of a list put together that wasn't comprehensive of all the different places that needed to be buffered from. So part of GIS's role is they make sure that that data is correct. They went to the Health and Human Services, or Texas Department, I think it's Health and Human Services, the state agency that licensed daycares. They pulled all the addresses in Victoria, City of Victoria. They pulled all the parks, and they really quality control-checked all of that data to make sure that the final map was accurate. So it can be a lot of work. Our next division is planning services, and I know y'all are tired of hearing about the Unified Development Ordinance, but it really was the theme of the year. We spent a lot of time on it, just, not just the actual ordinance, but once it was approved, updating all of our applications, processes, educating folks. And it just continues to really be at the forefront of the Planning Services Department. We even took it to APA, or the American Planning Association Conference, the state of Texas won. And it was really, a really well-attended session, and tons of questions and compliments of, oh, wow, y'all don't have a zoning map. So it'll be interesting to see if any other Texas cities adopt our model. We've had 12 Planning Commission meetings last fiscal year, and only three so far in this fiscal year. And you'll see our permit numbers and how those kind of correlate. And same with pre-development meetings are with our development and review team. We've had 68 pre-development meetings last fiscal year and only 20 this year so far. We are also responsible for keeping up the demographics for the city. And we mainly do this using the state demographer's office data, but sometimes we have to pull census or American Community Survey. So this is what our current estimates are, looking for the City of Victoria as well as the county. We have done a lot less annexation than we have in the past, and a lot of that is a result of state law changes. In fact, in my future annual reports that we may be giving, we may start seeing dis-annexation requests because the last legislative session, the legislature created a process that allows people to pretty easily de-annex themselves, especially out in the ETJ, not as much if you're already receiving those city services. But in 2024, we did annex the Billy T. Catan Recovery Outreach Center, and that was a total of 10 acres. So within the planning department, of course, we do manage the Community Development Block Grant. Every year, we have our annual action plan. If you remember the timeline, we present those funding, as Jesus just announced, in March is when we do kind of the call for subrecipients. And then in June, bring council the recommended list of who we're going to fund for that year, that where the money becomes available October 1st. And then we submit that to HUD. So our 2024 Annual Action Plan was approved. We completed last year's. And right now, we are working, every five years, we do a consolidated annual performance, or sorry, a CON Plan. And so we've just started having stakeholder meetings and gathering data on that. We also do the CAEPR every year, which is basically a report. It's the companion document to the Annual Action Plan. So Annual Action Plan says how we're going to spend the money. CAEPR says this is how we actually did spend it. And then that consolidated plan every five years, the Annual Action Plans all have to tie into that CON Plan. So just a reminder, this is who the CDBG grant is helping in our community. Anyone below the 80% median family income is eligible. And then if it's an area benefit, it has to be in one of the census tracts that's colored yellow on the map. And we have that map published on our GIS maps. So see, these are some of the highlights. We have been, over the last couple of years, doing some rehab projects. And so you'll see the pictures. We have an APA compliant walk-in shower and energy-efficient windows. We really want to be moving away from that in this next CON Plan and doing more public facility projects. But our allocation has kind of held steady at that half a million dollars over the last five years. The community development planners, well, as planning manager or myself, between the three of us, and we have attended 19 different meetings, mostly Zach, for community engagement with our Community Development Block Grant. And then our other federal grant has also been really busy. You heard all the last council meeting about our MTP, our five-year plan on that. We also developed the current Transportation Improvement Program, our TIP document, which is how actual construction projects get funded and started. We've been working with Victoria Transit on the route study, developed the UPWP, which is the NPO's budget, and then adopted, adopts all the performance measures as required. And then, of course, a whole slide on that MTP. It was a lot of work over the past year, and we are still ready for the NPO to approve it at the April meeting. And the only reason we haven't already approved it is because you don't want to move up your approval date with the feds. We're hoping that we end up with a rep that can review it and approve it for us. As you know, everything is kind of up in the air with the federal grants, but we're just continuing to move along as everything stays the same. So our largest division is the Development Center. We have continued to really focus on training our inspection staff, and we had a lot of new ICC certifications this year. Our Assistant Building Official, Eli Bressenio, did complete all the modules this year and gained that Certified Building Official, or CBO, standing with the ICC. Cory Mullins is now a Building Inspector II, was promoted, and he received two other inspections. Abiel Ramos and Jeff Allison are, each received residential building inspector certification, and those are combination inspectors one. And then Rick, of course, continues to be an expert in all things code and is serving on the ICC Code Development Committees. And of his committee this year, he was actually chosen as chair. So I've been guiding him a little bit on Robert's Rules of Order before he has his meetings. He's really regretting that, but it just kind of is a testament, I think, to Rick's experience that he was chosen. So here's some just data points on our, what our Development View Team's activity is. Site plans, as you can see, we're only at four year-to-date, which is pretty low. Major and minor plots, we're at seven. Land use verification, seven, and variances, five. This is our permit activity. So you'll see our values were actually pretty high. We had some big projects. Our permits issued, a little bit on the lower side. The residence, single-family residential new construction was at an all-time low. It's 41 homes is the lowest it's been since I've been here for the past 10 years, and Rick believes it's the lowest it's been in his 20-year tenure with the city. If you'll notice, our inspections, they have gone down a little bit. Interestingly, our fail rate on inspections is a pretty solid standard, 8%. So 8% of these inspections that were done resulted in a failure, where our inspectors had to go out and re-inspect, except in 2022. That was a 12% failure rate, and we were talking about it and kind of wondering why, why did it jump from 8 to 12%? And the consensus is 2020, somewhere in that 8,000 range or a little bit below, is when we hit max capacity. And we don't have time. There's too many inspections on the list for that day. They don't have time to provide any customer service or work with people. They just say, you're not ready. They fail it, and they move on. So years like 2022 keep us really, really busy. We're not closing out roofing permits, things like that. And then years like 2024, we're able to be really thorough and catch up on maybe some of those roofing permits that didn't get closed out in the previous years. So this is just a bar graph of that same permit activity. I did highlight some of the large permits to kind of show where those dollar amounts are coming from. So our commercial inspection, our commercial permit activities, those values have, are pretty high, even though overall permit numbers are pretty low. So it just takes a couple of projects. So for developments, our permit activity highlights, our Development Center highlights is we just continue to work with, and enforce the 2021 building codes, ICC codes, continue to do outreach and train all of the MEPs and professionals on that. We have a really great turnaround time for plan review, 10 business days. And we just went through an audit with ISO. They came to our office. They do that every five years. We do not have that audit results yet, but they did lead us to believe that we would maintain our ratings. So of course, we'll share that as soon as we receive those audit results. And then, of course, we have a list of major commercial permits, a major downtown permits. Mr. Gaddy seems to be a community favorite. And then, of course, the picture's worth 1,000 words. It's always really cool to see these projects happening. You can continue to be updated monthly on our permit activity if you subscribe to our monthly permit development and permit report. It gives all the data. In fact, it actually, there's an attachment with it that has all of the individually listed permits every month that are issued. So if you want to subscribe to that, you will get a link to that every month, and you can see month over month how we're doing. So our next division to talk about is code enforcement. We've had a lot of change over in staffing code enforcement. We had a longtime supervisor, his children graduated, and he decided to relocate to the City of San Antonio. So he actually got a job with City of Live Oak in the San Antonio area. And with that, we promoted Michelle Tyree as the new supervisor. And then another long-term code, longtime code enforcement officer actually transferred to our GIS department with the retirement of one of our GIS analysts. And so we filled those two vacancies. We were able to bring one of the new hires, Stephen Perez, and as a senior officer, code enforcement officer. He has, is a retired sheriff's deputy from Calhoun County. So there was really no on-the-job training at all. He was able to get his license and get started. And he likes code enforcement more than police work. So maybe if I have any more openings, now I know where to look. So all of our code enforcement officers do work nuisance. For a while there, we had split up with our seniors, doing the unit of court, property maintenance, substandard building, the more involved and harder cases, and having our newer staff just work on the environmental abatements, the, you know, high weeds and grass and junk. But they're all back to having a zone and doing all types of cases with our supervisor focusing on the fair fare, and we're again, helping out with cases that are a little bit more difficult. Our priority areas are, of course, the main fair fares, and then east- difficult. Our priority areas are, of course, the main fair fares and then east downtown South Side area. There's a lot of debate over what the South Side is. And then Queen City and Silver City areas. So we do a lot of cases. The more building standards commission or junk vehicle or substandard structure cases that we do, really kind of results in the less environmental nuisance complaints. And those really can vary. The, there's a lot of work that goes into those types of cases where an environmental nuisance complaint, we send a letter and 10 days later, we're able to abate it. That is not the case with the other types of cases. And we're always lower in the winter months, because of course, we have a huge uptick environmental cases in the summer months when everything is growing. So here's some examples of things that our code enforcement office takes care of. So properties like 304 East Murray, it's kind of very long, long process, takes a while to go from this to this, but well worth it. So challenges. For GIS, it's just the software. It's expensive. It's, takes, you know, a lot of specialized training to be able to do all of the new things that get created or developed in the software every year. It's sharing the information, continuing to build a portal for data downloads, and then coordinating with the other city departments or other agencies on making sure that the data that we are receiving is accurate. For example, VCAT has changed how they're outlining their parcels drastically. They're combining a lot of accounts. And so that's going to really impact the amount of work that our GIS team has to do on then our layer of parcels, because they're not necessarily going to match anymore. For planning services, our, our challenges is attracting and keeping qualified staff. If you look at the Development Services Department as a whole, we have a lot of tenure. We've had more openings in the last two years than we ever had in a lot, and that's mostly due to retirements, which is a great thing. But there are a couple of positions that are really our planning planner positions are hard to keep filled. I always joke that our new baby planners, we hire them straight out of college, and they go through the Julie Fuljum School of Planning, even though they have a, you know, a planning degree. It's not that hands-on experience. And then, of course, they get a couple of years and go on to other cities, because we're not necessarily, we're growing a lot of homegrown folks that have a degree in urban and regional planning are very closely related. So that is one hole that's very, or one challenge for us. And then, of course, the changing federal regulations and landscape and compliance requirements and all of the grants. That's another very challenging aspect of the planning side. So for the Development Center, our, is our inspections staff are starting to become eligible retirement age and eligible for retirement. So making sure that we have folks that can come in and train up and backfill those positions. And then, you know, I've been here 10 years, and there have been, you know, three or four years out of those that we've really been at capacity with, you know, just a lot of permits being issued that year. And then we have the down years, and that's just, you know, kind of hard to manage sometimes whenever you're at that capacity, because there's only so much we can do. So when we have those really, really strong years, which is great, I want to see, you know, a 10-year history of strong years, and then we can hire more staff. But when we do have those strong years, we're just doing less. We're not doing those roof inspections like we should. We're just closing out the permits, doing a drive-by. You know, there's a lot of shortcuts that happen whenever we have those really strong years. And then code adoptions, making sure that we're always staying up to date. And then, of course, our code software. Right now, we're still in the implementation of my government online software. I think it's going to be a lot better than Intergov what we have, but it's not going to be perfect. I'm just preparing myself for all the headaches. You know, I just, that's, that's how does a software write, James? And then code enforcement. Code enforcement probably has the biggest challenge right now in that they're at capacity. So you'll sometimes get a complaint of, you know, it's not a citizen will say, oh, I called into code enforcement, you know, a month ago, and they haven't done anything. And that's because we're prioritizing cases. There will, I tell my officers all the time that you will never work yourself out of a, of a job. There will always be more and more code enforcement cases to, to open once you, every time you close one. So they're, they're working at capacity. And so it just has to be a, an understanding of we're doing what we can, but we're not going to be able to always hit all of those complaints. And then lastly is future challenges is the facility. So we have four divisions in Development Services, and that's four different doors. And it's really awesome in the way that, in that I get my steps in every day. But it can be a challenge in communication and, you know, tracking down that staff member, you need to answer that question right that, at that moment. And so especially on the, the planning and administration side and the development or side, I think I, you know, Celeste or I or Rick are going across that hall all day, every day. So it just can be difficult in that we're all really fractured. And then, of course, the facility itself. So I came in not too long ago and had some new cracks in my wall. And it's, the picture really doesn't do it justice, but I have a great bookshelf that is not out of level. It's the floor that is out of level. Has a nice lean to it. So I think everyone knows the challenges with 700 mains. I really won't believe it. But in a dream world, all of my department would be in one office. And so that is all I have. And I also wanted to thank, publicly thank Maggie Bergeron, our NPO administrator, for helping me with the slide deck. We got, I put all the data in, and we were looking through, of course, I don't do this very often. And so I was looking through the PowerPoint, and we realized it looked kind of sad. And so she took it this weekend and, and updated it and created a new template for us. So I definitely wanted to thank her for that.
Ms. Rogen, just a couple of quick questions and one comment. If you jog my memory, when we adopted the UDO, there were a couple of items that I think we kind of carved out of there as a to-do later, and maybe it had to do with food trucks.
Yes. So we started on, had a food truck committee, but really, an integral part of the food truck ordinance and committee is the Fire Marshal's Office. And so we, we kind of started it. And then with the staffing issues that they've been having, it's been put back on hold. And we do have a list of amendments that we'll be bringing in the spring of just minor tweaks and things. And then I think the, the code, we're looking to adopt the 2024 ICC codes. So there'll be some additional cleanup, very minor stuff on some of our permit processes. And that'll, that'll come with us adopting the ICC codes.
Okay. And can we expect that on those tweaks and changes that there'll be some regulations related to data centers? I know that that's been, that will be included in that? Okay, fantastic. And was there anything else other than the food trucks from the UDO that was kind of cleanup items?
Well, one of the things that we sort of picked out and just parked away and said we'd maybe come back later was the park land dedication ordinance, the park land fee or land part of it. So, and at the time, you know, we were also going through transition with Parks Director. And so similar to Fire Marshal, it was the same sort of thing, right? It was, you know, we got to put those things on hold, make sure we get a new Fire Marshal in, a new Parks Director in. On the park side, though, we've got some other key vacancies in the department that quite frankly, probably doesn't currently allow time for the Parks Director to take on an initiative like that. But that was the other big thing that
Yes, thank you.
we had taken out.
Good. Well, we'll look forward to getting those additions coming up. And I just want to make a comment. You know, the, the 41 homes permits for 41 homes a year, I mean, it, it just kind of highlights what we've been talking about in terms of the importance of our Grow Victoria initiative that I know we're going to hear more about tonight in just a minute. But, you know, that's an all-time low. These are the kind of things that we just, those are the kind of, the information we need to say, hey, how do we plug this in? How do we make better decisions based on growth when we're seeing those kind of data points? So I just wanted to make that comment. So does anybody have any other questions or comments?
I do. On the code enforcement being at capacity, is that something that you see going into the future is going to maybe fluctuate where your officers get a little bit of relief? Or is, does that seem to be?
No, it's pretty much been at capacity since I've been here. There have always been way more cases than we can manage in the 10-day, two-week turnaround time of when legally we can get them taken care of.
And I think one thing that has exacerbated that a little bit was that a few years ago, there was an intentional effort, and Julie kind of alluded to it with the way that it was structured. But there was, there has been an intentional effort to tackle substandard structures to a greater degree. And those cases are more complex, require more time, you know, from the officers to just take, handhold basically, that case through the whole process. And so, you know, we exacerbated the, the workload by expecting them to take on these more severe cases. Because of our effort to try and beautify the community, we felt it was important to tackle those substandard structures. And so that's just something to keep in mind, that if the expectation is for us to continue to be able to do both, right? The complex substandard structure cases, but then also all the other ones, that's when you start getting into this capacity issue.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for the information. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Julie. Mayor, we can keep rocking and rolling if you're good with that?
Let's go.
Okay. Well, as you alluded to, Danielle will be presenting an annual report on economic development, which is really an update on Growing Victoria.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have a fiscal year annual report from 23, 24. And as we roll through this, I'll cover several topics, but Kate will also jump up when it comes time to talk about downtown. So Growing Victoria, Texas is the new initiative that we have set off to promote. And out of that, we did, we identified, you know, these areas that we want to focus on the most with goals and objectives. And that is retail recruitment, small business development, quality of life, workforce development, and housing development. And the mission is to be a catalyst for sustainable economic advancement, where collaborative innovation drives vibrant community prosperity and elevates the quality of life for all. So it's more about community development. So we'll start with retail recruitment. Last year, we successfully either facilitated or recruited these following businesses that opened in the last fiscal year. Longhorn Steakhouse, which was a success through the Sales Tax Development Corporation and helping fund and incentive to the mall to bring those folks online. Crumble Cookie Stir Soda, which was actually a business in downtown. They started in downtown and then expanded to the north side. Franklin's Backyard Bayou, Speedy Stop Liquors, Murphy's, 7-Eleven Stripes, and Mr. Gaddy's that we see on Laurent, which has been a huge success as well, with the growth of all of those convenience stores along Business 59. So as I go through this, I'm, in each section, I've identified some challenges and some opportunities. And then we'll, we'll conclude that with a review at the end. So it's a little bit different than some of the other reviews, because as economic development, it's not so much about the things that I am doing, but it's about what's going on in the community and how we are quantifying that and helping it along or making it better. So when we talk about retail recruitment, nationwide, there's been economic struggles. For example, with Red Lobster closing down, or with Big Lots closing down. Those are things that have been out of our control in order to retain. That's stuff that happens across the nation, not just to Victoria. There's also a challenge with competing priorities and strain on local incomes. And we lack that population growth. I think we've talked about that a lot, especially when we talk about housing, and we'll talk more about that later. If we don't have people moving to Victoria, then it, it doesn't help to sustain new retail, right? If we want to recruit more retail, they ask me, well, what's your population growth look like? And so that's been waning, and it made it very difficult to try to recruit some of the retailers that a lot of the citizens want to see in Victoria. So some of those opportunities, I think, lie with increasing support to BEDC and recruiting those primary jobs that have that higher salary, that they have the disposable income to go to our local retailers and shop there. Also a focused efforts on recruiting businesses and families to relocate to Victoria. I personally think Victoria is a great place to live, and I want to promote it that way. So hopefully, we can recruit more people to either move their business here or their family to relocate here. And then also collaborate and expand on local business development, retention, and expansion efforts. So leading into that, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the small business development side of things, and the entrepreneurship ecosystem, and the potential for our business retention and expansion program. So to start with the entrepreneur ecosystem, we currently have a lot of organizations and partners in our community that I try to meet with on a regular basis to talk about what are they doing? What are their goals? And how does it fit into this overall plan of a entrepreneurship ecosystem? And so I broke it out kind of like this. Among all the partners, you know, if we start with education and training, that's our workforce pipeline with BISD, UHB, Victoria College. And then also, if you're going to start a small business, I think a great place to start is with the SBDC over at the University of Houston, Victoria. They help you out with business plans and get you started on the right track. Then, then you look to financial capital. Now, that's local banks and loans, but then also, like I mentioned before, we have helped facilitate some incentives through the Victoria Sales Tax Corporation with facade grants, improving the outside exterior of your downtown business. But then there's also state and federal funding as well. Culture, an example of that would be Main Street is a, is a very small example of what a entrepreneurship ecosystem looks like. We have had several businesses in downtown that have vendor booths within them, and that's a great little business incubator for them to test the market in downtown. And then, and it just in Victoria in general, and then they can expand to their own brick and mortar. And then regulation, we have, of course, us Development Services. They do a fantastic job with helping small businesses along the way, their path when it comes to moving into a building. Social capital, we have BEDC and the Chamber of Commerce with those networking abilities amongst other like-minded small businesses in our town. Or maybe even expansion into an industrial-sized primary job expansion through BEDC. That networking is key. And then human capital, that still kind of goes hand in hand with workforce solutions. They do a lot of training, and they can provide certificates. They help people find those jobs that we have available in the community. And so does the university and the college. They help provide that human capital as well. So that's kind of what, in a nutshell, what an entrepreneurship ecosystem looks like, and something that I've been trying to focus on and cultivate as part of Growing Victoria. Now I wanted to touch a little bit on a business retention and expansion program. To maintain the robust entrepreneurship ecosystem, and I feel like this is a opportunity for the Economic Development Division, is to begin looking at what that business retention and expansion program requires, and what those additional resources are. And a lot of that is going to be, it's going to come down to having people to help carry it out. Because through the Buxton software that I have access to, it tells me that we have 3,543 small businesses within the city of Victoria. And those are ones that are, that employ 50 people or less. Or in total, it's a little over 30,000 jobs that they have with those businesses that are in Victoria. So if you want to have a good, robust business and retention expansion program where you meet with these folks with, for about an hour, if you will, to really dive into what their, their needs are and help is, you're looking at a little over 3,000 hours. So in order to touch every business in, in sort of a realistic fashion, it would be 3,000 hours, and you have to divide that out amongst staff. And right now, it's only me in economic and development. So some of those goals could look like conduct inventory, identify the stakeholders, assess the needs and concerns of the local businesses, develop supportive resources and incentives, establish strong community, communication channels, monitor and measure success, and promote and market the program. So again, the challenges and opportunities without a BRE program for all or a portion of the businesses, we risk losing revenues and employers within the city. And having dedicated staff And having dedicated staff members to build those relationships and solicit the feedback and track their progress is key for retaining our vast group of small businesses. So now, we're going to talk a little bit about quality of life, and that's where Kate comes in and talks about downtown. She's going to provide a review of the Main Street program, and also a nice review of the downtown master plan and where we stand today.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As Danielle mentioned, I'm going to go through some key highlights from downtown over the last year or so. And I would be remiss if I didn't cover that Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation is a key to the downtown success. They fund programs such as the facade grant program. And we always strive to make downtown an engaging and fun place to visit. So, the downtown master plan, I did kind of a real quick synopsis of projects that we've completed, projects that are in progress, ongoing projects, and then projects not yet initiated. There's 99 projects in that master plan, and so, so far, the ongoing projects are ones that don't necessarily have an end date to them. They're, they're something that always sticks with us, but we've completed, we've either touched, completed, or have ongoing, I think the statistics is 62% of the master plan. Last year, some of the hallmark projects were the downtown expansion, Dealeyon Expansion, which includes public restrooms, that were both really big items in the master plan. So we've seen some really splashy items checked off of our master plan that we're very proud of. So we go back to our reinvestment figures. These are figures that are split in between private, public, and partnered agreements. This is how I track data for our Main Street America reports. So when we see private investment, this is private business owners reinvesting in their own property. Public reinvestment is City of Victoria, County, Victoria College, anything that uses public funds, or is owned by a public entity, and then your overall reinvestment figure. So you can see some of the big private investment, that's partnered, about 87,000 is your public partnerships, that's facade grant type of programs. Some of those really big projects were the Greek Brothers Kitchen renovation, that now will allow them to provide a lunch menu on Fridays. So where they haven't been able to provide certain services before, now they can expand their menu, expand their staff, and expand their offerings. So that was a really big project for last year that I think Julie touched on in her report. And then the really big public reinvestment figures, some of that is the Dealeyon Plaza. The numbers were higher in last annual report, because that's when the permits were pulled. And I do use Julie's permit database a lot to, it's very helpful in compiling these figures. But a lot of those public reinvestment projects are projects like renovating the old Victoria Advocate Building by the county, or building the new parking lot that you see next to Greek Brothers, those types of projects. And again, help funded through the VSTDC. So the next couple of slides are going to go over some figures for jobs and businesses, job creation and business retention. We have approximately about 2,200 employment opportunities within the Main Street boundaries, and we both saw a net, we saw both a net gain in the full-time employment and the part-time employment. And I want to, I want to stress that those were net gains, because on the next slide, you'll see some net losses. But so far, we have about 2,000 full-time employment opportunities, and part-time, we have about 150. So net gain, we're again, both, we gained two full-time positions, and net gain, we gained about 16 for part-time employment. So the downtown businesses, and you'll see that we had 14 businesses closed last year, but we also had seven new businesses open, and we retained 131 of those businesses. So we have about 138 businesses within the boundaries. And then I wanted to also stress, I kind of broke out, because it, we retained five businesses within the city limit. So as Danielle mentioned, they may have outgrown their space in downtown and relocated outside of the Main Street boundaries. So these were not a total of complete closure. Some of them did relocate outside of Main Street boundaries for reasons. And again, I wanted to kind of give you an overview of some of those new businesses that did join us downtown. Remedy Inside, where 1839 was, that's right around the Jeckers Property, Texian a little bit, where they were located. The Public Defender's Office over on the corner of Forest and Liberty. La Cantina Tacos and Tequila did replace El Paso Tacos and Tequila. That was one of our major contributors to the increase in the part-time positions. They are a big-time employer downtown, probably one of the biggest, once you kind of get outside of the county, the Victoria College outside of the city, they're one of our big-time employers. But we've had a lot of really good, actually, I think Parkview Title started, they spun out of another title company. And then again, just to kind of give you an idea of the businesses that we didn't lose completely, but rather, you know, transitioned over to New Life Chiropractic is now over in Mitchell Artisan Market. I wish the boundaries were just a little bit bigger, and I could have counted them as a retention. And a couple of others you'll see have opted to become quote-unquote "mobile vendors." And then you see All-Star Properties moved outside of the Main Street boundaries, because their building that they were in was purchased. Plaza bookings continue to be in very high numbers. So we had a total of 839 events last year. The prior annual report, I came to council with a number of 870-plus events. So when I say events, these are both special events that bring maybe 500 or more people together, and smaller events that happen within businesses. Live Music Night, you know, inside markets that we've seen at Power Avenue Warehouse, et cetera. And I also want to note that the Plaza bookings are of April 6th to September 30th. So that's April, when the expansion opened, to the end of the fiscal year. That's a lot, and we only anticipate more. I think I got four applications just today for May. So, that number seems low, but that's also only part of the year. So we're still on trend to maybe meet or exceed the number that I came with last of 870 or so. So some of the challenges in downtown, we do lack a retail attainment. Instead of just kind of going in, cruising around, shopping, it creates more of an experience for the shopper. You know, maybe, it's maybe a pop-up, where you see the jewelry made custom in front of you, maybe like a hat bar. It's incorporating some kind of an entertainment with the retail shopping. Lack of residents living downtown, and I know there's lots of houses that surround downtown, but I think a hallmark of all downtowns that are thriving, you'll see multi, multi-unit housing, leading to a lack of business retention. We don't have the higher population to support the businesses that are in that part of town necessarily. So, you'll see that as a challenge. The downtown tax increment reinvestment zone fund, wanes in collections, and staffing is always a little bit of a heartache for us. No staff dedicated to the Arts and Cultural District. The Arts and Cultural District, we have been striving for, for the last few years. It's established municipally, but we want to establish it at the estate level, at the state level with the Texas Commission on the Arts. And we've learned that sometimes this can take years to accomplish, and it needs to really, truly operate as an entity within an entity, kind of like Main Street program does with the city. They have to keep their own books, they need to create their own programming. A lot of, you know, think of Georgetown, a lot of these cultural districts, towns have staff dedicated to helping with cultural district entities, or, or operate the district. And we also have a little bit of an efficiency challenge in terms of, this is not listed up there, but our maintenance department is split between about three different facilities. Storage is an issue for us. I think if we gain any more large items to store, it'll, it will be, we made it work. We did some adult Tetris, and we made it work this year, but it took some long hours and some very skilled building services, forklift drivers. So we pulled it off this year, but I think that's going to be a challenge for us in the coming years, is efficiency with all of our maintenance equipment spread out through about three different facilities and storage space for all of our event equipment. Opportunities, we look to focus on recruitment, efforts of retail attainment, and retail attainment. Advertise properties the city owns for residential development to bump that resident number, residential number up, promote downtown as a quality space of la, quality of place and ideal place to live, and focus on tours incentives on residential development and residential conversions. With that, is there, are there any questions that I can answer specifically for Main Street before Danielle takes the wheel again?
Any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now we're going to talk about workforce development. So, we successfully received the High Demand Job Training Grant, again, through the Sales Tax Development Corporation and the Texas Workforce Commission. And what that did was also help continue to fund Midcoast Construction Academy, and they were able to recruit 76 students, and that was 42 over last year. And it has proven time and time that that is a very valuable group and organization to continue on those efforts in those trades and getting those students there. Apprenticeship, that's such a hard word for me to say, in HVAC, electrical, and plumbing. And again, that cannot be made possible without key partners in the community with VSDC, Victoria College, VASD, and Midcoast Construction Academy. So it's been a huge success. Some of the challenges that we see is that there is a lack of the workforce versus specific trades or primary jobs with higher paying salaries. Again, going back to having those primary jobs would be really nice to help us support the retail that we have in our community. And a low median household income at 70,000 makes buying or renting a home very difficult. And the next topic I'm going to talk about, housing, a little bit more in depth. But opportunities, continue to provide support VC, UHB, and Midcoast to grow in their programs and facilities. Support our education partners for more and better workforce pipeline, which I was, I attended the partnership meeting this morning, and the CTE director provided some really beneficial information on new programs that they're offering with CTE education classes, and they align with a lot of the efforts that VC and UHB are doing as well, such as adding agriculture into their programs. So that's really exciting to see that we're, we're starting to all kind of go in the same path moving forward, and continue to support BEDC in any way that we can in recruiting those primary jobs. Housing development, I'm going to spend some time on this, and I really want to just kind of give you a review of what we have done for affordable housing, and why it continues to be a struggle. And it's a reoccurring theme tonight, actually. We got to hear from Ingrid Sparkman with Habitat, and also Julie talked about it a bit as well. So hopefully, this can kind of dive a little deeper in what we're seeing out there. So successfully, we got Enchanted Gardens off the ground through the Housing Finance Corporation and the city collaboration, and that brought 168 units to Victoria for affordable housing. But I also wanted to provide y'all a little snapshot of what we have existing as affordable housing already in Victoria. So you see a list there of other apartment complexes and multifamily units that we have already. And that is for general housing, what we call general housing, because then you also have senior housing. And we looked forward to having more senior housing with the Fish Pond at Victoria with 75 units, and the Victorian on John Stockbar with 68 units. And we already currently have the Thomas Niki Senior Village with 80 units. So, some of the other things that I've been learning more and more about with housing is that the current inventory is low. The median, median sell price is roughly $226,000, and that's a negative 8.5% year-over-year. 37 homes were sold last year, 69 days they stayed on the market. We currently have 308 homes on the market, and there's only 32 new homes built, which actually, this is fiscal year, so Julie's was a little bit higher number than mine, because she had some more months in there, I believe. So 32, I think it was 4041 that she mentioned. So that is concerning, and I do have some more slides that show a little bit better picture. But to talk a little bit more about the Victorian with the senior housing, that is new, and it will hopefully start construction later this year. That was a 9% tax credit senior housing, and made possible through the Housing Finance Corporation. 68 units, the development cost is going to be about $14 million. HFC contributed a $500,000 loan, and that's going to bring back $130,394 per year as tax revenue. So I wanted to dive a little bit deeper on the numbers of housing over the decades. If you could see in this graph here, that we've had some significant peaks in new homes being built in Victoria. But then you see a drastic drop there at 2010 and 2019, to where we are today at 274 homes being built. And we're, you know, roughly basing off of these numbers here, that there could be only a total of 685 homes being built in the next decade of 2020 to 2029. So, also, when we think about housing, and you look to see where we had those big peaks, we have some aging homes and infrastructure. And that is all the more reason why Julie is doing such a great job in trying to, you know, make sure that the houses that are falling apart, or becoming dilapidated, or getting repurposed, or, or building new homes as infill housing on those lots. And that's very important to you guys, because we would rather have homes that are producing more of the tax and property tax values than those that are not performing as well. So, I thought this was a good graphic to just show that housing is, is a big concern for our community, and people moving here might look at the older homes and think, gosh, what am I going to do, and how am I going to afford this? Demands and challenges, new homes, median household income cannot support the purchase of a new home at the median rate. 40% of the homes are renter occupied that we have currently in Victoria, paying a mortgage rental rate. Median mortgage is at $1,700, and median gross rent is $1,100. And just to fact-check myself, I was curious today, I looked up the apartment that I lived in 16 years ago, and it was only 687 square foot. Back then, I was paying $600 a month. Today, it's $909 a month, same apartment. And it was old when I moved in there. So, that is, that is concerning, and it makes it difficult for our, our median household income folks to actually support those rates in trying to find that affordable housing in Victoria. Also, with that, that list that I provided earlier on the general housing and all those units that we have available, I called around and we checked to see what, what are the vacancy rates of those? There are vacancy rates in those affordable housing units right now, because there is a large population that's kind of stuck in the middle. They make just a little bit too much money to actually qualify to even move into those. So those people, we call the middle or the mixed income housing units. So, makes it even more difficult for those that are in the median household income to even afford the affordable housing. And so I'm going to break it down a little bit here. Low-income housing tax credit properties, such as Enchanted Gardens, often target households with incomes at or below 60% of the area median income, which to qualify technically affordable housing in Victoria, you must make roughly $40,800 with a house of four people living in there, with lower caps for smaller households, right? So it goes down. For an example, our lowest-paid COV employee makes approximately $31,000 a year. They could qualify for the affordable housing if they had three other people living with them in the home, not also producing income. If you were to add another salary, which- If you were to add another salary, which you would hope because you still got to buy groceries, um, pay for insurance, car maybe, telephone, um, that puts you at roughly sixty-two thousand dollars a year in annual salary, which puts you over that forty percent.
Forty thousand.
Sorry, forty thousand to qualify for the affordable housing. So then that leaves you with, how do I pay for childcare? How do I pay for the groceries and the gas and the fuel, et cetera? So the opportunities um that I've identified for the housing infill incentives, they're, the Housing Finance Corporation is still working towards other, uh, another affordable housing unit on Autumn Street. Um, Julie has drafted Housing Infill and Redevelopment Program Guidelines, which we look to present to the H F C soon. And um, just again, if you go back to the graph, I just gave some numbers there on how old the housing is in Victoria. But um, we also look to reintroduce the Public Facility Corporation to attract more workforce housing for high-quality, mixed-income families that are not currently served by the housing tax credits or market rate developments. These projects would allow for an eighty percent A M I, which opens the cap ceiling a little higher to accommodate those other professions that make just a little too much money. And that would be examples of police, fire and teachers, um, which we struggle to retain. And others that fall in the middle. The corporation could also generate additional revenues to the city, the Public Facility Corporation, that can use, that you can use those revenues for parks, public facilities, operational costs, um, C I P projects, et cetera. So that's just a little deeper dive on the housing. And conclusion, we have just a quick review of each of those categories. When we talk about retail recruitment challenges, small business development, um, quality of life, workforce and housing. Um, and basically what it all boils down to is time, money, people. And people is my biggest struggle to have the staff to try to manage um, aspects of all of these areas that I am in charge of trying to grow Victoria. Are there any questions?
You may have questions. You know, I'll just comment that that certainly housing remains a struggle. Um, you know, what we see in terms of new development, I think, has been mostly out in the county. You know, outside of the city limits and certainly we will continue to work on, see what we can do to bump those numbers within the city itself to build our tax base. I am encouraged, however, uh, by your report, uh, to see the investment we're making in workforce development. Um, you know, we saw immediate return on that, uh, with the number of young folks that are now going to these academies, learning life skills, life trades, that's going to bump that forty thousand, you know, that 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 income up. Um, and I think that's a good path that we need to continue to pursue because I think that will reap benefits for the city down the road, so. Anyway, alright, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks for the information.
Thanks, Danielle.
And I believe that concludes our city manager reports. Okay, we will have an executive session. Um, we will take a break and actually, our executive session is going to be in the conference room uh, in the city manager's office. So we will adjourn at six-thirty and reconvene back over there in about ten minutes.
The city council recessed our executive session on the eighteenth day of February twenty-twenty-five at six-thirty P M. Subject matters is Paulus Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four.